This is the Wapaka School District Board of Education meeting.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you everyone for making time to join us this evening. Our agenda isn't overly long, but we do have quite a few items to address. So with that, again, my thanks for joining us this evening. And I am going to start with a pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask Ella, if you would look at us, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I didn't get you at your first board meeting, but your second one, your fair.
Fair game.
Okay, with that, we'll take roll call.
Steve Hackett? Betty Mannion? Here.
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 Sandy Robinson?
Here.
Dale Fow?
Here.
Steve Johnson?
Here. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone that is joining us that wishes to address the board? Okay, with that, we will move on to the board norms. Dale, would you take number one, please?
Yep, be prepared, stay informed, listen to others, and be open to differing opinions and perspectives, being inquisitive, reflective, and respectful, checking our biases and agendas at the door. We will thoughtfully and objectively discuss the facts of the situation and not personalize issues or policies.
Betty, number two, please.
Ensure open and clear communications and maintain transparency, no surprises.
Remain objective, forward-thinking, and open-minded, respect the opinions of others. If those online can see the screen well enough, could I ask Mark to do number four?
Maintaining professional relationships is key. Know and respect the roles and responsibilities of the board, governing, administration, tactical, and staff operational.
Pat, number five?
Start on time and on time, stay on task.
Thank you. Sandy, number six?
When a board decision is made, we accept and abide by the decisions both publicly and privately. We accomplish more reminded than divided.
And I have not seen Steve having chimed in as of yet, so I will take the last one on there and protect the expectation of confidentiality of all topics addressed and discussions held in closed sessions. All right, thank you. With that, we move on to approval of the minutes. We have the December 8th, 2020 regular board meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second, fair.
Motion by Dale, second by Pat. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications, Ms. Presari?
We have one communication which would involve that it is adult crossings are week, the week of January 15th to 22nd, so next week, and then my report. Just a few updates here. The first is regarding vocal and music. Our 7 through 12 vocal was approved prior to Christmas break to begin choral practice with surgical masks and larger areas with increased spacing. This week, we started with students in the elementary traveling to their specials rooms, getting some increased travel in the hallways, and we anticipate our K through 6 beginning, being able to begin singing in music class sometime soon, we hope. A little update from our grant writer attached to my board report, there's a link and you can actually see the report that he shared. This is the last report and coming up here, we're going to have the December report soon. But basically, as far as it pertains to us, there's two grants in the works right now, the mental health program, where we're requesting $48,000 for a contract with Gagal Therapy, which would provide teletherapy sessions for students. And the other is a broadband expansion grant that Josh Werner from the city is working with Greg on for approximately a little over $42,000 to develop the new broadband towers in our county. So far, Greg has written two grants that have been approved, or two grants for the month of November, requesting $10,500 year-to-date to have been approved for almost $80,000. Most of that is the CVC with the chamber getting for the loss of revenue that they took with the pandemic. The WASB convention, I have some links in here for everybody. The convention guidebook, the link to the convention WASB website, and then that note-taking template that we started using last year for everybody. And when you use that, if you could just copy it, take a copy of it from, hit the file, and then you can name it whatever you want.
Ron, could I interrupt? Could you send that, could you send that link out to us, the education convention guidebook?
Yeah, Pat, I can. You know, this board report is linked in the agenda.
So it's already there?
Yeah, it's in, it's in the agenda. So if you go under Administrator Report and open up my whole, I don't know, four or five-page report here will pop up and you'll see it, it's item number three.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, and I'm not going to read through this whole piece here. It's mostly just, I shared a few of the sessions that I was personally interested in, and then I shared some sessions that maybe board members would be personally interested in. And then I also included the keynote speakers. There's Ana Chavez, who is the executive director of the National School Board Association, Governor Tony Evers, and some guy, I don't know, Donald Driver? I think I've heard of him before. Did he play some kind of sport?
Driver's Ed Teacher.
Driver's Ed Teacher?
Yeah.
Played for the Bears.
Did he play for the Bears?
No.
Okay, a little update. I also linked the HR memo that we sent to staff last week. I'm going to be sending this out to staff again this week, just to make sure that everybody's aware of it. But it just is talking about how the FF-CRA, that Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, has expired. And then we kind of lay out all the other pieces that are going on, what the new rules are in there. We also talk about the fact that our staff are sitting with additional days, typically on average leave days this year better than we were even last year. So we're feeling pretty good about that. Been meeting last week and this week with some open-enrolled students and Mr. Warbowski. Several meetings took place for those students who are truant and failing classes. Because, you know, when you're an open-enrolled student, it's, you're a guest in our district. And it's our, what our goal is, is to help the students get back on track and not be truant and to be passing all of their classes. Linked in this report is also a district's financial status presentation that I gave last week at Rotary. I'm not going to go through it. Nothing in there should be a surprise to you. But I was asked and put this together for Rotary. Probably will do this annually. And then number seven, the opportunity to grow and lead presentation. Today was my deadline, as you're aware. I sent an email to everybody with the link of my self-reflection for my mid-year evaluation, and just wanted to briefly touch on that presentation again and hit a few pieces. Because as we remember last month, the overarching goal is, that we all agreed on, is to work together to take our district from various levels of good to increasing levels of great as a board superintendent team, working closer together. And then the role model to the district and our entire community, our growth mindset that we have. And that partnership of purpose that was talked about in our book study, the School Board Field Book, meeting with Vision, that success is based on these three things, trust, a trusting relationship. We talked about trust matters and the five facets of trust, benevolence, honesty, openness, reliability, and competence. And that's built through time, over time through repetitive interactions. Also, understanding our roles, responsibilities, and then effective communication. Everyone has different communication needs, and it's important for us to know what everybody's communication needs are so that we can meet them. And of course, this takes time and it's a two-way street. Believing in the best intentions of everybody and seeking clarity when we're not clear. This last part, number eight in my report, I don't know if it's, if you guys want to hear it now or to talk about it during the policy piece, but it's just answering the questions that the policy committee had and addressing those with the answers were. And maybe you have seen it by looking at the report prior to the meeting. I don't know. Would you guys prefer I talk about it right now and just go through this? Or would you rather have it and do this, Steve, at the policy section?
I think we can do it at the policy section.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the monitoring food service update.
That's Dar, and Dar is joining us virtually on the other floor.
Second?
Yes.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me all right?
We can, Dar. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, Happy New Year. I mean, it's January 12th still. What we're going to do is we're going to, I'm just going to give you an update about what we're doing and why. Kind of talk about where we are currently and then just talk a little bit about some transition plans. So if you want to start with the first one, it says we cater to all needs. Carrie Anderson, my production manager, drew this up for me, and I think it really does summarize what we are doing and why. Starting with the Take Home Tuesdays, that's still available for the CEC Learning Center and the fifth and sixth at the middle school. Currently, there are 225 students that participate in that program. And to date, this would be from October 14th through December 31st. We've had 3,252 meals with just that program there on the Take Home Tuesdays. The second one we have is the Wednesday pickup meals. Currently, we have 128 students and 58 families that participate in this program. Roughly 30 families at the high school and 28 around at the Learning Center that come and pick up at the various times. So far, from October 14th until now, we've given out a total of 11,340 meals to that program. We also have the A-B schedule, and that's for the middle school and the high school 7th through 12th graders. Currently, we have 79 students in the A section, 59 in the B that participate in this program, and so far, we've given out 6,724 meals on that program. Last but not least, we have the in-person learners. Those are the ones that eat with us two to four days a week. And so far this year, we have served 55,111 meals with that program. Looking at we were last year, we are down 34,866 meals from where we were.
Dar, can I interrupt?
So if you wanted to go? Absolutely, yes.
This is Pat. What do you consider when you say we served X number of meals? What constitute a meal in your eyes? Is it, is it a person going through a line? Or is it a volume of food? Or what is a meal from your perspective?
What they are is, like the ones on the Wednesdays, we give them two ounces of protein, at least one ounce of bread. We have a fruit and a vegetable, and then the milk for the Wednesdays. The, all the other meals that when I say meals, the ones that are in the line, it's the ones that we give them the full reimbursable meal. It includes the protein, the fruit, the vegetable, the grain, and the milk. So that's what I mean by the full meal. The Take Home Tuesday meals are more of a breakfast kit. It's still reimbursable. It has normally like a breakfast bar or a cereal. It has like a Graham cracker, and then it has a juice. The reason that we don't send home milk with those is because it's being sent home with younger students. And so therefore, it's, we just don't advise doing that. But it's still considered a reimbursable meal under this program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So that kind of takes care of sheet one and sheet two. I did want to point one thing out on the second sheet. You will see the school, the WCAP, that's the Wapaka County Alternative Program. I wasn't sure if the board was aware that we do provide meals for that school as well. They come and they pick them up at the high school now. They used to come and pick them up at the Learning Center, but now there's older students and they wanted more of a hot meal. So we've transitioned to having them come and pick it up at the high school. So that's another thing that we do, just to let you know if you weren't aware of that. The third, third thing I want to look at is the financial comparison. I did make an error in the operating transfer for the 1920 school year. It should have been an operating transfer of 131,225 instead of the number that I had, which was 49,332. So I apologize for that mistake. Looking at 2021, we really don't know what it's going to look like right now. If you look at the bottom right on this same sheet on the 2021 school year, these are the reimbursements that we get from the federal government right now. So in September, we had 43,994. Is everybody with me on that? On the bottom?
Yes.
So anyway, the reimbursements now, as you go down, September was off by 8,000, but as you move down to October, November, and December, the reimbursements are up substantially. So that is only, that's one good thing about the summer food service program that we are under right now, is that the reimbursements are larger than they would be with the National School Lunch Program. And we can run this program at least through the end of the school year. I am working on updating that contract to include next summer school. So we're hoping that we can continue, maybe with some Wednesday pickup meals or having community members come in on a daily basis when in summer school to take part in our meals as well. So hopefully, we'll get some reimbursement through that avenue as well. But again, our revenues are down. The à la carte just from this year, September through December, is down 40, almost $48,000 during that time period. We don't have any vending coming, and the cafe is not open, as we know. And we're not getting any revenues for the paid or reduced students. Also, our costs have increased as far as like gloves and chemicals, food, especially the individually wrapped foods that we used have gone up. I just had $6,444 taken away by the USDA because they canceled the trucks at the processors. So there are some issues with increased costs, no doubt. We will do our best to keep in line, and I did get a DPI email today saying that I can contact the processors that canceled those foods and see if we can somehow get some of that back in the future. Our labor is down. We don't, we have positions that we don't have anybody in the cafe, so we don't have, that position is not filled. There's a position at the middle school where the cart is not filled, also a dishwasher position. So there's 16 hours a day that is not being filled at this time because we just don't have the need for those positions. So if we can go to number four, where we're looking at district meal to labor hour. Currently, this year, it's 11.19. Normal rates would be 14 to 18, but this is not a normal year, as we all know. If you look down at the CEC, it's 7.5. The meal counts are increasing at that school the last couple of weeks, starting in January. And hopefully, with maybe more students coming back at the CEC, we'll see that improve. The Learning Center is at 1801, which is good. We also count the Wednesday meals. That's why that's so high. Breakfast is really a good participation rate at the Learning Center as well. I'm hoping that'll also increase with more people coming back. Same at the middle school, it's at 11.15. Again, we're hoping for more participation and getting those labor hours in line with the meals. The high school is the lowest at 7.99. It does take a lot of labor to put out those types of meals at the high school. They have to put on the condiments. There's more choices. So it's just a more labor-intensive. But with some of the students coming back, we are going to implement a to-go cart with a kind of a value-packed meal that's, that will take some of the, hopefully, that the lines won't be so long when these kids come back and give them another option. So those are things that we're looking into. And again, with, in the future with the transition plans, we just hope to have increased participation. And with the reimbursement rates, I hope we come out not, not as bad as it could be. So, does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Yes, I have, I have at least one. Dar, when you mentioned that the alternative school and the number of meals that you prepared for them, are they working on a hybrid system or are they there every day?
Just froze up. Laurie, do you know? Is it a hybrid?
I believe they are there four days a week.
Four days a week? Okay, and my other question was, why are we being reimbursed more for summer food meals than regular school year? What's the difference?
I believe we've lost power.
Okay.
We will get the answer for you, Pat.
Okay.
Can you hear us, Dar?
I didn't quite catch all of, he's cutting in and out.
Now, the question was, why are the summer school reimbursement amounts higher than the regular school year reimbursement amounts?
They're two different federal programs altogether. And why they're more is they, they're just really trying in the summer to get schools and people and communities to participate and giving them an opportunity to at least break even. During the school year with the National School Lunch Program, schools will do that. We do that. But a lot of schools don't always do the summer food service program because they're going to lose money. So the reimbursement rates have always been substantially higher for that, for that reason.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, Dar, thanks to you and your entire group for everything you're doing for students. I could hear in your presentation that you seemed perhaps concerned about revenues. Do not be. You are doing the right thing. The district is doing the right thing, and we thank you very much, as we do your entire staff. So keep up the good work.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dar.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to board reports. First are the upcoming meetings. January 14th, the Learning in 2021 Stakeholders Meeting at 5:00 in the Commons here at the high school. January 20th through 22nd, the WASB State Education Convention, which will be held virtually. January 29th, Policy Committee Meeting at 11:00 a.m. February 9th, Regular Board Meeting at 5:15. February 12th, Policy Committee Meeting at 11:00 a.m. And February 26th, Policy Committee Meeting at 11:00 a.m. I will also have Sandy reaching out to all the board members to schedule a meeting, which will be a closed-session meeting, to do a performance evaluation or begin that process. With that, item B was a change of date for the March Regular Board Meeting to March 16th. Is there a motion to do so?
Yeah, the rationale is that's during our spring break.
Oh, okay.
And we were hoping we could do it the next, the next week so that... Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to change the meeting from March, that would have been, so, March 9th to March 16th. I know that was a...
That's minus seven for the path, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Is there a second?
Regular Board Meeting to March 16th from March 17th.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mark? Thank you. Any discussion? There being non-roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Yeah, he saw one there.
Aye.
Betty Mannion? Dar?
Aye.
Mark Poldavitzki?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Fow?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. Okay, so that meeting is, will be moved to March 16th. Next item on the agenda is spring election candidates. We've got in no specific order, I guess it's an order that was drawn, Mark Poldavitzki incumbent, Joel Bartle, Sandy Robinson incumbent, Emily Nicolai, Steve Quismet, and Betty Mannion incumbent. With that, we'll move on to the Instructional Committee, but before I turn it over to the committee chair, it seemed appropriate at this point, I was advised on my way into this meeting, that long-term educator and administrator with us, Boyd Simmenson's wife, passed away. So our sincere sympathies to the family, and our prayers are with them. With that, I will move on to the committee report, please.
Okay, the Instructional Committee met on December 14th, 2020, and all members were present, including myself, Betty Mannion, and Pat Fair, and the rest of the board members were there as well. We had Mark Flaton present that there's going to be some new classes that are going to be arriving here if they're approved tonight at the high school. The WHH English will be offering two new courses, the two semester courses. They're going to be an advanced, let's see, I can't remember if this is advanced. Yeah, it's up there for me? Yep, yeah, the advanced English 10 and an advanced, I believe it was a literature, American literature course, yep. And those are for, those will just be semester courses. Then the Social Studies Department, they said that they're going to be replacing their current introduction social studies to a global studies course, which is a pretty neat course that I read about, and the advanced placement human geography course. And they'll also have, replace their world history course with ancient civilization. So it was brought to the board and recommended by, or motion was made by Pat Fair and Betty Mannion, second, to make the recommendation to the full board to accept these changes for the 21, 22 school year.
That being a recommendation by the board, no second is required. Any discussion? Roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Aye.
Mark Poldavitzki?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Fow?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
And we thank for all the work that the teachers did to, in making our course selection a little better here for the high school students. And we thank for all the work that the teachers did to in making our course selection a little better here for the high school students. We also discussed that there was a correction to eleven ten twenty memo regarding inclement weather. To be in line with the with the intent of the motion that was made. There was an error on November tenth, twenty twenty memo relating to replacing inclement weather day with remote learning days, in particular Monday, February fifteenth. It was stated in the memo that February fifteenth was the scheduled break. However, that is incorrect. It is no school that day for students, but staff have it in service that day. And that was going to be our fourth inclement weather makeup day. This only impacts teachers, not students, and the administration will communicate this correction in an upcoming staff survey. No school doesn't mean no school for staff. So the students will not have school that day. Staff will. As mentioned previously, if school is closed because of inclement weather, the district would switch to a virtual learning day. Mr. Flaton presented guidelines which detail learning intentions on inclement weather days. It was added that we do bring students back to in person learning. It will be four days a week for everyone. However, the district will continue at the online learning only option as well. So motion was made by Pat Fair and seconded by Betty Mannion to make a recommendation to the full board at the next regular board meeting, which is tonight. To restore Monday, February fifteen, twenty twenty one as a staff in service day as presented and recommended by administration. This motion carried unanimously on a voice vote. So we're bringing that to the board at this point.
This being a committee recommendation, it requires no second. Is there any discussion? Roll call?
Steve Hackett?
I.
I.
Pobelbaskin?
I.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Thel?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. Okay, with that, Joint Finance Committee Meeting with the Chain Exploration Center Governance Council Meeting.
Yes, the joint the joint committee meeting was held on December seventeenth, and it was an opportunity for us to review our audited financial statements. Together with our auditor. Who's Karen Kerber from the independent audit firm of Kerber Rose S C. And also for the. Chain Exploration Center's Governance Council to. Be part of a presentation related to the external audit that is required as part of our the federal grant that we received. To review that document as well. And I am very happy to report, and this is a very typical thing that we say each year, and I'm very thankful for that, that Kerber Rose reports that they in their their. What do they call it? The. Opinion letter to state that the the district provided them with all of the information that they needed in order to perform the audit. And she noted that the district assets were higher at the end of twenty twenty than they were at the end of twenty nineteen. And that the district has a healthy fund balance, very little debt. And would be in very good shape to borrow additional monies if that need should arise. And all of that is very good news. She also noted that the district's cash funds are all protected and insured, and we have one long term. Debt or we have one debt obligation that's going to be paid off as of March fifteenth, twenty twenty two. And then there were some other. She also complimented Mr. Hayek and the business office indicating that they did a great job in preparing the budget. And that our year end was very close to actual. So kudos to our business office and to Mr. Hayek for the work that they do. Now, we did not. Make a committee recommendation at this meeting, and so I will do that in a moment. But I do want to note that since the time that we met in December, there have been a few adjustments made by the auditor to our audit. And so the document that board members received and that's posted online now. I I want to say received most recently, and the document that is online now reflects a few adjustments to ensure that we had. Full consistency between the way things, certain areas were reported throughout, and that the charter school authorizer schedule of operating cost was included in the audit as required by the D P I. So all of that with that, I'm very happy to make a motion that we accept the audit as it is currently presented with the amendments that have been made by the auditor since the time of our review on December seventeenth.
Motion by Sandy. Second by. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Audit is accepted. With that, we'll move on to the Policy Committee.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Yes, but actually, we can circle back at this time. Just going back very briefly at something that probably falls better into the Instructional Committee realm. Mark, did you have a comment for us or some information?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on a conversation we've been having at the high school regarding one of our articulated classes with Fox Valley Technical College for second semester. Students are required to have so many hours of hands on learning. And with our current pandemic and scheduling, it's not possible for all students. So the the teacher and the Fox Valley Technical College instructor coordinators have been working together. And they are offering us to teach two other classes that don't require as much hands on learning that would be equivalent, same number of articulated credits. So I I'd like to propose that we move forth with with those for this second semester. We're so. Timing of this is not great by any stretch. The new course proposal forms will be forthcoming. It's just a matter of learning of of these challenges. And being able to be responsive to the student needs for second semester.
Mark, what are the names of those courses? Do you know?
Yeah, so right now, the the class that's being impacted the most is the gas metal arc welding course. And what we'd like to do is propose that if a student can come in enough hours, and depending on what happens with our second semester schedule. We'd still like to offer that course, but if they can't come in to meet those requirements. The two courses that would replace that would be a welding print reading course. And a welding symbols course. So those classes are more blueprint focused versus hands on actual welding courses.
Mark, I have a question. Follow up from Dale's. Do we have students who have already or will be signing up for those? And if so, is there a minimum number?
Yeah, that that class is already scheduled to run, Mr. Fair, for second semester. The G M A W Classic Gas Metal Arc Welding Course.
Okay, thank you.
The second part of that, Mark, was, do you know how many, any idea of how many might have registered for that?
Um, I can find that out for you in a minute or two here. I don't. I don't know if Mr. Robowski or Mr. Tomaszewski knows.
And last year, we ran into the same situation because of in the spring when the students were taking this, and it kind of became a mess, and we lost students. They weren't able to do this. And the only other option we had was to send them to Appleton. To fulfill this during the summer months, and and a couple of our students took that opportunity. So these two courses that would replace this would also be more of a general course, so that way it would allow them to more paths. So if they were going into whether it was welding for auto or welding for pipe fitting, that these would fit in there. So the number of kids that it represents, you know, it it's going to range depending if the kids were virtual or not. And it could be anywhere. I think that number is close to twelve to fourteen. If I'm correct on that.
Okay, thank you. Mark, you still have your little hand up on the computer, electronic hand? Did you have anything else?
No, that was it. It was just it's kind of a heads up and not sure how we wanted to handle the situation. I know we've been used to this new course proposal form. We've been bringing it to committee. Had we anticipated or known this challenge before we had that committee meeting, we certainly would have brought it up to the committee meeting. But this was recently brought to our attention once we returned from break.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved to allow these classes to proceed?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Move on to Policy Committee, and that would be Mr. Fair. Pat, you're on mute right now.
It appears that he's frozen in time.
Well, that's interesting.
He must be thinking about the snow days when he was a child. He's. R I P. Snow days officially. Kids can have snow days.
No, Mark, you probably know him as well as anybody, so it's entirely possible. You're right. Pat, if you can hear us, if you could either log out and log back in or call in. Hello, Pat?
I think he's watching the Badgers game right now. We'll have to halftime score.
You just left, I think, so maybe it's breaking the game. We'll wait just a moment. I presume he will be back with us. As we wait, we could ask Betty to sing a little song or Jim to play.
No.
A little music in the background for us.
Jim, those are like good country music.
I'm sure.
I do. I can tell you I don't have a pen for you.
Joe could tell about the sweet new scoreboards that we just got put in?
Yeah, they're they're operating right now, and I haven't had anybody come knocking my door, so I think that's a good sign. So they are great and functioning awesome.
How many scoreboards did we get, Joe?
Uh, four. We replaced them in the high school gym from the old ones that we had that. Last year, we had some technical issues. One of our controllers broke down, and I called Fair Play. They didn't even recognize the model of scoreboard that we had, and they told me that they stopped making replacement parts over ten years ago. So. All four of them were the same that we that we had previously.
Okay, while we wait for Pat to rejoin us as the chair of the Policy Committee. I I would like to move on to item G on the Agenda Administration, which starts with the enrollment update and enrollment projections, and then we'll circle back to the Policy Committee.
Sorry, my internet just went out. I just came back in.
Okay, Pat's back on. So, Pat, Policy Committee?
Okay, thank you. Well, the Policy Committee met a couple of times. The first meeting was on December eighteenth. Uh, committee members, Mark and Sandy were both in attendance, along with most, if not all, the other board members. And as you can see on the agenda. We had a long laundry list of policies that we went through. We have quite a long list of them to get through, and we're going to be meeting on a pretty regular basis a couple of times a month to try to knock off as many policies as we can within the next couple, three months. The first meeting on the eighteenth. We have a list of policies. I I don't think I need to go through these. We can take them, I believe, in one as one vote. And you see the the policies there on the agenda in terms of what their content and subject matter was. So we had a motion by Sandy and a second by Mark to okay the committees. Uh, I'm sorry, the policies, and I'll just mention the numbers so that we get them in for the record. This would be policy two two six six, nondiscrimination policy eight four five zero point one oh one. Protective equipment, W one one zero educational philosophy. W one five three board self evaluation, W one seventy four organizational meeting of the board. W one eighty five board committees, W one eighty five point one board committee structure. W one eighty seven public comment. W one sixty one public expression of board members. W two 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 administrative contracts, W two five one organization for administrative purposes. And W two five one point one organizational chart. And before we go, I know there was one question on that organizational chart that Sandy brought up. Maybe Sandy, you could just clarify that for us.
Well, actually, my question had to related to what how it was posted on the the website, the Niola website, but Ron clarified that for me, and I don't have any issues. They had the administration had presented a copy of the organizational chart. And there weren't any changes at that point, and so that's basically what we're approving here, the one that currently exists in our own policy.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, the committee would move that these be approved by the full board.
Okay, that being a committee recommendation, that needs no second. I will clarify W two 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 is administrative for contracts, not administrative contracts. With that, is there any discussion? There being non roll call?
Steve Hackett?
I.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
I.
I.
Yes.
Dale Thel?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. Okay, Pat?
Okay, the committee met again on January the sixth. And on your agenda, you have an A and a B concerning recommendation for board compensation. After having reached out individually to the other members of the committee, we decided to table this particular recommendation for the moment. We'll take this up again at our next meeting, which will be sometime later this month. And hopefully, within a short time, we'll bring this back to the full committee, the full board. Having said that. There is another laundry list of policies that we did and are recommending. And again, I'll just read these again for the record, and then we'll take them all as one particular vote. So our recommendation to adopt by the full board are following. W one eighty six Advisory Committee. Niola Policy zero one 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 on the legal name. W one sixty, the number. W one eighty three voting, W one eighty four meeting of minutes. Niola Policy zero one zero zero definitions, Niola Policy zero one one two purpose. Niola Policy zero one one three boundaries. Niola Policy zero one one four classification. Niola Policy zero one one five address, Niola Policy one twenty one authority. Niola Policy zero one two two board powers. Niola Policy one thirty two point one selection of district administrator. Niola Policy zero one three two point two administrative guidelines. And Niola Policy zero one three three judicial. And after discussion and going through these, we would make that recommendation to the full board.
Okay, I'm not going to say I missed one of those, but would you please repeat it because it's such a long list. With that, being a committee recommendation that needs no second, is there any discussion?
Uh, I I have clarification. About the the compensation. I don't I don't. I thought that was part of that group. And I just want to apologize to the board. I, when we talked about the compensation, my goal was number one, to stay within, you know, our budget, number two, to make the compensation legal. And number three, do what the administration recommended. And I thought I was doing that, but after the meeting, I thought about it. I would like the compensation piece, and I don't see it in there. Hold out and on the next policy and revisit that in a meeting because I don't want to spend our time doing that now. So yeah, I have concerns on on my. Motion for for that.
Yeah, item A and B have been tabled. Yeah, items A and B have been tabled, Merk, and that is with regard to board compensation.
Sandy?
Yes, I just have one thing. Since we're tabling it, part of the reason we were looking at this was to make sure we were compliant with the law, and so I would simply ask that while we retain the current compensation policies that we have, that we do not pay additional stipends to the officers, because that's where we were. We had been advised that we needed to stop doing that in the manner that we were doing it.
That's that's correct, and I think if we don't do that, we're certainly not breaking any rules. And when we make a decision on whether to go one direction, meaning stipends only or meetings only, then that'll clarify our policy and we'll work from there. So, but Mark, to your point, Mark, A and B have been tabled, so we'll bring that up at the next policy meeting and work from there. And I think we still have a motion on the floor for all the rest.
Yes, we do. With that, I ask for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Sandy's hand is still off. Does she have anything else to air?
Nope, she just took it down. Okay, being there are no comments, roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Freddie Manion? Yes, Pat there?
Hi.
Mark Holdenstein?
Hi.
Randy Robinson?
Yes.
Daleph?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
And one more thing before the committee is our committee has moved on. We do have our convention next week for the state convention, and I just want to make sure that we understand, in the past, because we're talking about compensation and we're not changing anything, our present policy is in effect. In the past, of course, we attended the state convention in purpose, in person, and that was a fairly straightforward situation. Now we're doing virtual. So the question has come up, and we haven't really been able to come up with an answer other than to say it's the same as we've always done, but in reality, it's not, and that is, how are we to go about compensation for the state convention?
Under current compensation practices, whether you attend in person or virtually, you do get compensated.
So we should keep our own log, if you will, of the amount of time we participate?
That would be appreciated, yes.
Okay, and then turn those into Sandy Lucas?
Yes.
Okay. That clarifies everything.
Okay. Administration?
Well, we have the first item is the enrollment update and enrollment projections, and Mark has put together a report for us.
So this report is similar to what I've done in years past. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on the first few pages, but this first page just kind of outlines kind of that five-year history of the enrollment in the school district of Apacca, and shouldn't be of a surprise that our enrollment, like many schools in the state and across the state, are declining enrollment. So if you go to page two of this, it gives you a more detailed breakdown over the last several years of exactly where our students are at. You can see I left the comparisons from what we projected to what we actually have this year, and they work out at the bottom to be accurate without the 4K totals. You can see the 4K totals were down quite a few students this year, as we anticipated we'd be, because 4K is not a mandatory obligation for parents to send their students to school. So we're down a few 4K students this year. However, we do anticipate that that'll pick back up. And of course, everything in yellow is an estimate based off an annual average of where we're at, but there you can see that per grade, if you're so inclined or interested. The next slide on page three of the document breaks down the transfers in and out. Student mobility is something we always keep our eye on, so you can see the number of students from that timeframe of a June 5th to a January 4th of 2021 in terms of open enrollment in and open enrollment out students. And then the following page is pages four, five, six, seven, give you a much more detailed view of where those students are transferring to us from and where our students are transferring out to. In addition to that, you can see that there's data from the 1920s, our current school year, as well as from last school year, so kind of as a measuring stick for you. And at the bottom there in green, we lose on this year, we've lost so far 24 students due to open enrollment. Last year, we lost net of 13 students due to open enrollment. That second number down there, that negative 50, is we're losing 50 students to virtual schools this year through open enrollment. But because our difference is only a net of 24, that means we've got 26 students that we're picking up through in-person school. That's why there's that difference there. And again, you can see how that compares to last year. So last year, we were losing 36 students to virtual school. This year, it is up to 50 students to virtual schools. So that next part of it is really taking a look at that from the last survey that we had asked our parents about the 2122 school year. What would be your request for the 2122 school year? And that was a question that we had said, based on the information available to us today, as part of our quarterly survey, we asked them, which learning plan option, either A, five days per week of in-person, or B, five days per week of on-demand remote learning, or there was another category, would you choose? And so this is kind of a visual chart of it. You can see that vast majority of individuals chose the five-person or five-in-person, five days per week category, and the next largest majority was that on-demand category. And then there was a whole smattering of variety of other things. When you leave other, that should be expected. So that chart below just kind of breaks down those areas or those responses for us of the parents who did respond, so that our principals can go ahead and see by what grade level people are requesting for what. So in summary here, you know, obviously, we're living in unprecedented and unpredictable times. We're doing our best to make the best out of every situation. As mentioned earlier, our staff are doing great things to ensure that learning is continuing at the highest level possible. As we continue to look forward to preparing for the 2122 school year, here's some points of consideration. You know, I think having the Chain Exploration Center has been a great opportunity for the school district for a variety of reasons. One of those reasons being, we know the amount of work that's required to open up a charter school. And if we were going to look at opening up a virtual charter school, we know how much work and dedication and time and commitment that's going to take. So at this point in time, my recommendation is not to go down that pathway, but to continue operating like we have been since March in some regards, is that we would offer certain classes to be online, and we would go not from the on-demand and live option, but just choose one of those two options. And my recommendation at this time would be to move to that on-demand platform, if that's what we so choose for the 2122 school year. I know at the high school, there's been some conversation over which classes could be offered to students online, because as we learn, and as I mentioned earlier tonight, not all of our classes are possible or as effective if they're 100% online. So we began having those conversations about which classes could be offered 100% online. We're continuing to seek input from our students, parents, and staff. There's currently another survey that's out there right now regarding our transition plan that we'll talk about in a little bit. And in terms of any kind of enrollment or staffing, you know, we need to hire one more teacher this year to fulfill our CEC contract in that eighth grade position. Otherwise, the staffing levels in all other buildings, the recommendation is to maintain consistency or status quo with those. However, as with all of our positions across our district, whether we're talking administrative, teacher, educational assistant, custodian, food service worker, we review every position if it becomes available to ensure that they're still at need for it. So this isn't a memo where there's any recommendations out of it. It's just an informational memo. Some of this information will be probably redundant in the next couple memos, but I wanted to kind of give you guys that big picture overview of our student enrollment.
Are there any questions?
Mark, this is Pat. I have one question. Do you see in the future the possibility of having a full-time teacher on our staff who is for virtual classes only? Even if beyond the pandemic?
Yeah, Pat, that's a great question. You know, what does that look like? If you look at page eight and you look at those charts and you reflect the numbers of how many of our students are currently doing some sorts of a virtual option, we're probably going to be around that 85% of our students in person is that request. And so 15% seems like a lot, but when you start talking about 15% out of 100 kids in a grade, for example, how do we manage that from a staffing situation? So that is something we are keeping a close eye on, and that is something we continue to have conversations with our principals about. How do we best manage that? Because that will be a bit of a challenge. That could have ripple effects, too, if we pull a teacher out of a grade to only teach 15 students who are elected to be online in that grade. That would, of course, increase class sizes in those other sections. So that's something we have to monitor and continue to watch absolutely.
Merk, what was the response rate on this?
From the parent survey regarding the the decision for next year?
Yes.
So
Response was?
Yep, it was overall 34.5%.
Okay.
Mark, out of the number of students who opt out of our district, do you think the situation this year in the world with COVID situation attributes to this higher number, or is it a trend, or do you predict that it'll go down next year? Is that even fair to predict, or what are your thoughts on that?
I think it's been a trend that's been a part of education for many years, to be quite honest with you, for a variety of reasons. And I think COVID, the current worldwide health pandemic, added to that trend at a little bit greater of a rate than than typical. I think students and families make that selection again for a variety of reasons, and I think it's I do have my concerns about the lack of socialization from some of those decisions that are made, but again, I'm not I'm not in the shoes of that family making that decisions either. So I think we have to be careful in our approach to moving forward in terms of what are our values and our mission and our vision, making sure that they're in agreement with those decisions that we would put forth as well.
Thank you.
Sandy, did you have a question?
Yes, just a few quick ones. The first one is, do you have a sense of what, when people check the other box, what they might have wanted as a different option?
Yep, so we did ask for comments if they're going to choose the other box, and anything you could imagine, Sandy, was chosen. So some of them said, put our kids back in school five days a week, which is why the numbers are slightly different. Some of them said, continue with an A-day, B-day schedule. Some of them said, come up with a three-day-a-week schedule, in-person, two days a week, online. It was kind of all over the place.
Okay, and then my second question is, when we're looking at open enrollment, these are open enrollments to public schools only true, and it's my understanding that we really don't, we aren't really able to get data that would tell us where students might be going if they went to a private school, enrolled in a private school.
Yeah, I believe that's accurate, Sandy, because the reporting to the state is not the same requirements from private schools versus public schools.
Mark, can I just, can I follow up to Betty's question? She wanted to know about the students that are that we've lost in terms of virtual. Do we any, are we doing any kind of a questionnaire or survey of those students who say, hey, I'm going to opt out of Apacca and going on to virtual, as to what it might take to bring them back? Is there anything that we're lacking that they are finding elsewhere, or I know you said it's a multitude of reasons for families, but I'm just curious as to if you said to them, what would it take to bring you back into the fold, so to speak? What kind of answers do you think we might receive?
You know, that's a great question, Pat. I do know that they are asked to fill out a survey or a questionnaire when that decision is made to do open enrollments. And I know we don't get 100% response rate. I can follow up with with our student information individual, Ashley Tresbitowski, who would have maybe a little bit more insight onto that. I know Mr. Sarri had talked to her before about that and looking at that. I don't know if that was specific to virtual schools or not. Ron, I don't know if you want to talk to that at all?
Yeah, last year, she did follow up and made phone calls to those who did not complete our survey to try to get, you know, all the reasons and the rationale why. And then also this year, we're going to be sending through the U.S. Postal Service a hard copy letter to all of these families, as well as a little brochure or pamphlet of what we're doing in our school district, just to make them aware of it in case they're not.
Thank you, Steve Tommasi.
I did, but Ron said it, that we were sending out to the families.
You didn't want to explain it differently?
No.
Okay, all right. Other questions?
One last, one last one. And this is sort of the converse or the compliment to the question about, do we interview people who leave our district? Do we interview families who opt to open enroll into our district to find out what prompted that decision as well?
I believe this survey is set up for both ins and outs. I would have to double-check on that. Ron, I don't know, or Steve, if you have any other information on that, but I thought it was tied to the registration.
It is. Once Ashley brings them in, because they meet with her directly, she has them go through the online process, and then she has that questionnaire to ask what attracted them, and then she gives that information to Ron usually, or we make summaries of it so they understand those reasons why they're coming in, whether it's sports or it's CTE program, or it's some of the things they've heard.
I can see where this is heading. If for a future meeting, we could get a brief synopsis of any information from those surveys, so that the board has a better feel for why people may be opting in or out.
Can I just add one more to follow up on that, as long as Joe is online? Joe, do you see anybody opting into our district just because of athletics, or not just because, but because of a certain program?
Yep, I had given a tour to a family when they opened enrolled here that specifically was excited to play hockey, because there's other school didn't offer it. So, and that's pretty common, especially if there's an interest that a student really loves. If their current district doesn't offer that, they'll look at surrounding see if a if a school does offer that. So we we've offered a variety of activities, and I think that is definitely a benefit at times for that situation.
And to follow up on, is the converse true as well? Have you been one of people who've moved out because we don't have certain things, maybe gymnastics or swimming or something like that?
Not that I was told, but I'm sure that's possible. You know, I would certainly think that, yeah, like you said, anything that we don't offer, that if there's that opportunity down the road, that they just love that passion, that they would pursue that. But I haven't had anybody since I've been here specifically say that to me, but I could see that happening.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the open enrollment limits.
And that is my report. I'll start out right now by sharing a lovely typo that we have in the regard section of the of the intro. At the new year, I think we always shift of writing the next year or the wrong year. This is space available for open enrollment for the 2021-2022 school districts. That is reflected correctly through the rest of the report, but it is inaccurate in the header.
I didn't even notice that.
I missed it. I just noticed it today. So similar to last year, this is an annual action item that we have for the Board of Education for us to look at regular open enrollment spaces available, as well as special education open enrollment spaces available. In the in the proposal, I just stated out what that Wisconsin statute is for 118.51 that dictates that we have to do this within the month of January, so that is completed. What we do is we typically have taken a breakdown of all of our different schools, so W4K, for example, the WLC, the CEC, the middle school, and the high school. So what it talks about currently is what our enrollment projections are. for next year, and this is taken directly from the report that Mr. Flaton just provided to the Board of Education, with what the, you know, the projection is for 4K for next year and what our capacity is. So right now with our enrollment projected at 142 and our capacity at 180, 4K is not the greatest example to use right now because we are on a bubble enrollment year just with the pandemic. It would mean we would have thirty-eight spaces available for open enrollment families to apply to come in. However, for special education spaces, we have left that at zero. And to remind you, last year, we did close down special education across the district, surely because of staffing and the fact that we only have a finite number of spaces across the district. And looking at our numbers, where we are, where we are staffed, we are averaging caseloads of around fifteen and above, which is a high caseload for special education, especially with our younger kiddos. And while that does vary, it's not fifteen for everyone. Some folks may have eight, and some folks may have twenty at the high school. I don't want to overburden the staff that we have, or be pushed to hire additional staff for students that aren't residents of the school district. So you'll see that as a trend as we roll through. At the WLC, you see what our projected enrollments are for K through four. It also lists how many sections we're projecting and the maximum number of students per section. So with our AGR funding, we do max at eighteen students per classroom, A through three, which leaves us with a variety of different regular spaces available, anywhere from two to twenty. And then in fourth grade, we have seven spaces available. At the Chain Exploration Center, grades K through three are maxed at eighteen per section. We are, at this point, trending to be full in all of those classrooms, so we don't have any open enrollment spaces available. But in grades four through eight, we will have a variety of spaces available, and those are listed there. At our middle school and high school, we have open regular education spots available, similar as we have had in the past, because we aren't as locked into those classroom assignments and section numbers. It is more open, but again, it does show what our enrollments are projected at for next year. So again, I went very, very briefly through that, for that general open information. But this is an action item to approve both those regular education and special education seats. If you do have any questions in regards to any of that, I would be happy to answer those as well.
Are there any questions? Pretty straightforward. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, with to accept the recommended regular education non-residency seats available under open enrollment for the 2021-22 school year as presented. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Yes. And is there a motion with regard to special education, non-residency seats available?
I would move that we accept the recommendation to, that there is no space available within the Special Education Department for open enrollment applications in 2020, 2020, 2021, 2022.
Thank you. Nice. Motion by Sandy Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dale Phelps, any discussion? Roll call.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi. Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the Chain Exploration Center enrollment update.
I believe Carrie is here. Carrie, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So this information is just some basic information about enrollment and how things will look moving forward as we prepare for enrollment next year and the spaces that we potentially would have available for our students if there needed to be a lottery for professional families wanting to enroll. This is just basic information at this point, informational only. You can see background information. It shares the growth that we've had over the last three years. And then the summary talks about, and Lori just kind of gave that same information, the number of spaces that would be available as of right now. Currently, I'm working with two families to enroll their children at the chain at various grade levels, so these numbers would change as of probably next Tuesday as well. So as noted, just a recommendation for information only. Our lottery date has not been set for next year. We'll do that at our January 28th Governance Council meeting.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the Activities Department update.
Yeah, I just wanted to start by sharing my appreciation for all of our advisors and coaches this school year. They've worked extremely hard with all the new protocols that are in place and the adjustments that every activity has had to go through this year with the impact of the pandemic. And their creativeness and willingness to work hard to offer these opportunities for our students has just been awesome. These students, I think, really have benefited by being able to participate in activities that they love, especially with how hard the last nine months have been since all this started. So I just really am appreciative for all the hard work that our advisors and coaches have done on that front. When it comes to our activities updates and highlights from this school year already, football had three players receive all-conference second-team honors, and one player received honorable mention. Hunter Markham actually signed a national letter of intent to go to Central Michigan University to play college football on a scholarship. In girls' golf, we had one athlete make it to sectionals. In cross country, five of our runners set personal records at their subsectional race at the end of the season. Boys' soccer, the team advanced all the way to sectionals after defeating Freedom, which was the conference champ in regionals. Two players received first team. One athlete made it to second-team all-conference, and one athlete was honorable mention. And Bryce Bolt was actually awarded the Offensive Player of the Year for our conference, which is really special and really cool for him. Volleyball had a great season, made it all the way to regional finals. They actually upset the number-one seed Antigo the second round of regionals, and they had one athlete make it to the second-team all-conference. Destination Imagination created these ornament kits that they donated to local nursing homes around the holidays, and the team will be competing in an improvisation as their challenge when their state competition is virtually held this school year coming up. We didn't have middle school fall sports, but our coaches were able to offer intermural opportunities in football, soccer, and volleyball. So those students were allowed to have the opportunity to still participate in those activities that they really enjoy. Our middle school and high school chess teams are both competing right now in tournaments virtually and will continue to do so through March. Middle school authors and actors, they created an outstanding virtual theater festival using students. Forensics completed their entire season already. It was all done virtually, and we were the only school to get all blue ribbons. We also had three groups earn A pluses, and in order to earn an A plus, the performance has to be one of the best performances the judge has ever seen. So those are very hard to earn. For middle school dance and high school dance, they will be doing some performances for their families to attend, and then they'll have some competitions coming up this winter. The all-school play this year, they're trying to put together an on-location filming of a play called Almost Maine, and they're going to be working on that now, and hopefully we'll have that virtual filming done this winter into spring. Link Crew held a virtual freshman orientation at the beginning of the year, and they also have gone into the freshman classes multiple times this year just to help share information that they think would be beneficial for our younger students as they get accustomed to high school way of life. The Magical Group was able to create a virtual Songs of the Seasons performance, since they weren't able to travel around like a normal year. They had put together a really nice virtual performance. Our high school Student Council group has done a lot of great initiatives, like raking lawns for community members, handed out candy, collected tube-to-toothpaste, and they've just been really active throughout this, finding ways to be able to help with different things throughout the district. Forensics, they last spring competed virtually and had a student earn their fourth place in the category of Moments in History, and they'll still have a full season this year, and it'll be entirely virtual for competition, and hope to, again, compete at the national level in these virtual tournaments coming up. The SAD group was able to put together a donation event for the Foundations for Living Warmer Shelter or Warming Shelter, which was really great, collecting things and then sharing that with those. And then FFA has been doing a lot of cool things this year. One thing they wanted to highlight was their Virtual Career Day for eighth graders, where they interviewed eight different people in various careers. Then each FFA officer created an intro video and an outro video with questions or an activity, which was really cool, too. So again, there's been so many different things offered this school year in the midst of all the challenges, and it's just been really cool to see. And lots of help from our nurses, our athletic trainers, Cindy, our secretaries have all been great to be able to help us offer these opportunities.
Thank you. You focused a lot on our students and their activities. I think it's a great bridge to ask Ella, who is our student representative, to give us her report. Are you prepared for that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. The floor is yours, Ella.
Okay. So along with like the usual talk of sports, basketball and hockey, and I think there's a basketball game tonight in the gym, actually. One of the other main topics that the students and teachers have been talking about is the change to the four-days-a-week plan. I've had quite a few conversations with my peers and teachers about this, and there were some concerns. I think some of the major concerns that are being brought up was the high-risk students and staff. There were like less social distancing, more COVID cases, more quarantines, and then a major change in a routine that is just getting normal, I guess. And when it comes to academics, the current plan in place, I feel like some students were talking about how it would out them if they have like failing grades. Because if some first people that will go four days a week will be the failing students and special education. So if all of a sudden I see someone that's showing up four days a week that hasn't been there before, can kind of infer, and that could cause some sort of maybe bullying or confidence issues and stuff like that. Yeah. And along with that, I think the failing students right now would, their grades would probably improve, but more of the high-risk students that would have to move online, their grades might start to drop, so the failing might start to level out and just change who's failing rather than. And then that's just what I've gathered from my peers and my teachers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for Joe or Ella?
I have a question for Ella. Ella, in your classes, and I'm sure you have seven, eight teachers, that you personally interact with on a regular basis, but being at the high school in general, are there staff members who you think are really concerned about more student interaction, meaning more days where we have face-to-face because of health conditions for themselves? Do you think that's a real problem for some of them?
I know that there are teachers that are worried about having to, like the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, if they, I think that's what it's called, if they have the, if they have to go on quarantine in the sick days, and then the.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentations and input. With that, we'll move on to item five, which is the Increasing In-Person Learning Transition Planning Update.
So this is a document that we've been working diligently on for quite a while, and it's still something that could change depending on what the data shows us. As you can see, we're looking at a four-week transition, increasing in-person instruction for our seventh through twelfth-grade students. This would begin this process on Tuesday, January 19th, so next week. And why are we considering this? Well, there's three main reasons. Our local data continues to trend in the right direction, although recently there's been a little bit of a hiccup, which is why it's a three-phased between four weeks, was the recommendation from our medical advisors. The second is that we believe in research that most students learn best with consistent in-person instruction. And finally, more and more research and health experts are recommending that the benefits of bringing your students back to increased levels of in-person learning, at this time based on the data, outweigh the risks. In addition, the negative side effects of limited in-person learning of many students, which include limited access to essential services, social isolation, learning loss, and lack of engagement need to be addressed. Then I have a second, we have a second box here that we share some data. I don't know if I have to go through all of this data and these five bullet points, but this sampling of specific data points will continue to be monitored. Every day we're looking at this. We also track additional data, such as close contact numbers, the hospitalization rates, spikes, long-term care, county facility rates, and this is something that we share with everybody as well. There is no one data source that guides us. We kind of look at the collective preponderance of all of the data together, and then have conversations with not only our internal teams, including with our nurses, but also with the county, with the other superintendents in our county, and with our medical advisors as well. So the proposed plan continues with Wednesdays being a remote learning day for everybody, all students, PK through 12, because teachers are still working three modalities. They're doing the on-demand, they're doing the live remote, and the in-person. Some of them are, and they need some extra time to meet with students, especially the virtual students who may be struggling, need additional support. So all three learning plan options will remain with this transition plan. So beginning on Tuesday of next week, the 19th of January, those students identified as greatest need, and our high school special ed students would come back to four days. And this was based on medical recommendation to get the struggling students in sooner rather than later. They really like the idea of this tiered approach. We are the only district in our county that I'm aware of that is doing the tiered approach. The second would be Monday, February 1st, the second stage, where seventh graders at the middle school, and our ninth graders and twelfth graders at the high school, they've been identified as needing to come in sooner. And then, two weeks after that, Tuesday, February 16th, the eighth graders at the middle, and then the 10th and juniors at the high school coming in for four days. We have a couple of additional boxes, but I don't know if I really need to go through that and read that to you. Just additional points that were taken into consideration, and also the fact that everything we do is a risk, and we believe that this calculated risk will have more benefit than not.
All right, thank you. Questions?
Nice question. Why the two-week transition?
Well, initially, good question, Betty. Initially, we were talking about just a week in between. And with that little uptick that we've had recently, not a significant one, but a little one, it was advised that we just spread it out so that we would then have fourteen days in between to kind of look at what are our rates at at that point? And if things start to go south, we're just going to send a communication that we're not going to be able to continue or whatever, after we consult with our medical advisors what it would be.
Let's address what Ella said, and that's on the January 19th, having the greatest need in high school of special education students, bring them in. That is kind of calling it off a little bit. Bring them to the forefront. Can we address that somehow? I mean, as being a former teacher, I can see where that could have a devastating on those. I mean, as being a former teacher, I can see where that, that could have a devastating on those kids. I'd like to suggest that this go back to the administration core team for discussion rather than necessarily try to address it here. I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, what you said holds some truth.
Yeah.
And I would hope that, I think, Ron, you've told me this is a pretty, we talked about this, it's a very flexible plan. So with other suggestions from people.
And we're still planning on presenting this on Thursday at our stakeholder meeting and getting feedback from those stakeholders as well. It's just that we had to get some things in motion because on Friday, we just can't all of a sudden, I mean, it takes time for the principals to identify and, you know, and then it takes time for Ashley to create the learning plans for, for everybody. She has to go back in, she's doing that this week and trying to get it all set up for those who are saying, uh, we want to come in person. Some, some even though they've been identified, they can come back. They're saying, we're going to continue to work remotely. So it, it's just that part of it's timing.
Pat, you had a question or?
I did. And maybe Mike Wrofsky can help with the answer. How, how do we determine greatest need here?
What, um, we talked about was students that had one or more Fs, um, on their second quarter report. And we generated that, um, that list. So it's one or more Fs on their report card.
So, so we're looking at greatest need based solely on academics?
Yeah, at this point, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So does this plan mean that the freshmen or the sophomores and juniors who have been coming A B schedule, now all of a sudden they're all going to be home?
No, we, we continue with the A B, Betty.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that stays, it's just, again, in four days.
Okay.
They'll be.
Okay, so I got it. Okay.
So be bringing in those students who need, then bringing back 50% additional to the students that are here A B, another two-week break and another 50%. And that's for the students that are choosing in-person learning.
I still think we have to make a point on, when you're looking at the high school, that there's not, what, what is your enrollment at the high school right now?
630 or something?
Right. And if you look at, this is about 80% of the kids.
Correct.
Okay. You take 80% of that, you know, you, or lose 20%, you're still down to a very small amount. Cause this building, I think, can hold around 1,200 students. So you're looking maybe at what, um, 500 kids going to be here, 400 some going to be here.
Yeah, in the neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah. So I still think, uh, personally that social distancing, even it could be about three foot apart, well, easily keep the kids at three foot. So in some classes though, maybe not, because a lot of the freshmen are coming in.
Yeah, it depends on the individual course, you know, there is variance.
But as a building as a whole, if we're worried about that, I don't know. And it's, it's still a small amount of people in this, in the building of this size. Sandy, you had your hand up at one point?
I did. And then I, I, well, since you called on me, I'll ask the question. How many people, I mean, what size of the groups, how many students are we thinking each, um, of these three segments will involve?
Well, Sandy, we're anticipating about 15, possibly a little bit more percent are still wanting to do the remote.
And no, and so each of these different tiers, you know, the, each of these different dates will introduce approximately one-third of the students who are not opt, uh, who do want to be in person?
Well, like, let's say, uh, that second tier, when the seventh grade come, comes back. So at the middle school, the fifth and the sixth are already four days a week. And all, the, the, the seventh and eighth are A B days. So we would do two weeks with the seventh grade, four days a week. So it would be half of, half of that, that A B cohort there, uh, be less than half because a percentage of them are, are already doing the remote.
If, if I could just interrupt to do the math real quickly, Sandy, based off the numbers that we provided earlier with current enrollments. What's already saying, for example, is there's currently 141 seventh graders enrolled at the middle school. If you take 85% of that, um, puts you at 120 students. And then if you cut that in half, because some of the students are already there on A days, the other students are there on B days, you'd be introducing about 60 students more to the middle school on that second phase.
Got it. Thank you.
Pat, you had a question?
I did. Kind of going back to what Dale said a little earlier. What, what if I'm a student who, who is told next Tuesday, I'm going to be asked to come in four days a week because I have done poorly in a couple of classes? Is it a requirement or is it voluntary?
Well, it, we're, we're hoping they would make that choice, but we, we're not requiring it because if they have health concerns, uh, there are some families, even though they, they aren't doing very well, they're saying they want to keep them remote and we're allowing them to do that because of.
Yeah. And I was just thinking as kind of following up on, on some of the concerns that brought up, uh, by our student and also by Dale, but also, uh, parents who have been since September now have gotten into a routine in terms of their schedule. And now if one of their students has to come four days a week and they have two or three others that don't, or at least one or two others that don't, um, you know, in some, I can see where some families might say, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to change. We're going to stay the way we are, uh, until everybody's back on a five-day or something like that. That's why I asked whether it's voluntary or if it's mandatory.
Got it.
I think in a case, certainly who knows what questions will come up, Pat. In a case like that, at least we aren't having additional students staying home. If anything, in the case that you brought up, where there might be three students in the family, uh, one of them is going to be going more. It's not that we're having someone at home more. Ron, I can tell you that I, I totally understand where you're coming from though. On the other end of this, we've got to bring these kids back that are failing because we can't have this large of a failure rate and say we're succeeding.
A lot of the parents are pleading and when we read the comments through the survey, they're just saying, thank you, thank you. And some were just, the sooner the better, the sooner the better.
Cause I remember at our last stakeholder meeting, that, um, failure list was a high percentage. So. Okay. Well, understanding that this is, uh, something as administration will continue to work on and keep us apprised on as we move forward. Uh, any other questions, Pat? You still have your little hand up, electronic hand? Did you have anything else? Okay, your hand's down. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second was by Sandy. Being on roll call.
Steve Packett?
Hi.
Is that a man name?
Yeah.
Hi. Hi.
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, it takes us to a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion? I will make the motion to adjourn. Dale Feld motions. Is there a second?
Oh, second. This is Pat, but before we dismiss, uh, Steve, could you give us an idea when that next meeting you're talking about might be?
I'm going to have Sandy, Sandy send out a, an inquiry to see what we can get scheduled next, uh, week.
Cause we have the convention next week.
Yes.
So hopefully before then?
We will see what people's availability is and hopefully before, but if not, immediately following. Okay, we have a motion and second to adjourn and all in favor.
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. Very much appreciate your time and your commitment to the district. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye. Stay healthy.